We were waiting for you. All right. Well. Welcome, everybody. We start with the pledge of allegiance. We have Commissioner Barber, Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Longburn, Commissioner Schuman, President. All other members, Mr. Johnson, Tom, and Montgomery are excuse. We have some meeting minutes from the meeting. On June sixth. There has been no. No submission. Or changes. There are any. What can be known is the need for approved. Now we have a work session on the agenda. And we're the agritourism ordinance. Charles.
Thank you. We will enable.
Before we get started, we discussed last time that we don't look at the possibility of saying we're not going to have agritourism in anything less certain. Have you reviewed that? Have you made any?
Yeah, that's in this thing.
As I've thought about it, I think we should push towards nine acres. Why? And I think six is too small. It's really only two units, really. Could be one or one not. Really hard to make a viable farm in six acres. Nine is is re is somewhat doable. You could have a small farming, cows, and you can have some stuff that might be making like. Make it somewhat viable. And and the goal being of agritourism to make an open space. If nine acres would you to, you know, some saving. So. I mean, my. Just the thought of it, the open, you know, you say. This does not apply to things that we can't do unless you have nine acres.
Is it nine acres of farmland?
Just the line.
Or nine, because I know you said open spaces considered ten acres or more, right? That was your definition of open space?
Sort of general plan, considerable space. Yeah, that's not necessarily. What I have a definition for.
So in the mod, in your modified text here, it says six acres of operational.
It does, operational fund. So that'd be the key that we want to hold in mind. So if it's ninety per parcel. If six of that is operational, then it would work. But if it's a seventy per parcel, six of it is operational, it'll work. So if we want to change six to nine, we could do that or. Some combination.
So Jeff. I'm I'll try and catch up or or where I'm what you're, I'm sure you're familiar with most of it, but what we get discussed is what we were doing this in the work sessions is we found that there's so much unknown. We don't know what's a viable farm and what's. What's reading, what we do know, the agritourism, as we've seen it, is on bigger farms. Right? And that that is what we need to preserve. The smaller farms, we're not saying we want to put them out of business, so. But we just don't know what needs to be regulated. So instead of trying to drill down and say you can and can't do this, we're just going to say this only implies to the big stuff.
Plenty of things, so as you were saying, because. The bad benefit that it. It maintains or hopefully the intention is to make in their land too far and therefore not sell off the land in the development, right? So if you're doing it for the smaller section, even though they're farming, if they don't really have a development, right? It's often, you know, it's not that we're trying to punish, but we aren't the end result, the benefit being. Maintain the the farm, which if it's a bigger farm, then it's. Going to need some help to be viable and and money producing, but at the same time, the added benefit of risk of retaining. Yeah, not developing, so I think.
Okay, I attended one work session on this. And then missed the last one.
The last one's where we kind of came.
Yeah.
So as I, I think these materials, despite the purpose. Of agritourism, I didn't see where it says preserve open space. It says provide supplemental income. To to the farm operation. Which doesn't need to be made, but it can be small.
It has to be a real farm. So deep in the original and all the language it talks about. In a small operation, you have to meet the threshold of the Farmland Assessment Act, and that means. Showing that you earn eighty percent of your income from that small operation, which is a very high farm. That's what it says.
The ordinance says. That your. Land has to produce, what is it, fifty percent or something like farmland. It crops equivalent to some percentage of like farmland in the area. If not, you don't have to produce eighty percent of your income, personal income off your farm. If the land has to produce. A percentage, not a hundred percent, less than a hundred percent of what like acreage. Does in the same area to qualify under green belt.
Can you help me understand what you mean by like acreage?
Yeah, if it's pasture land. Okay, typically in the area, you can pass your X number of hours per acre. Say, I'm going to make up a number, five, okay? But if you compress your three. And you can say, well, this is dry and I don't have any irrigation that can pass through one of that. Okay, both are, you're in the green though. So. So the the distinct. I hear talking about, well, it has to be a real farm. Well, what's a real farm?
I think it has to be a real farm, or you're going to have people. Now, this is word scam, running a scam, so they can have a hotel operation on their property in small properties in neighborhoods. If that's what you want, you just need to say so. Otherwise, it has to really be an agricultural. Operation, and there's all sorts of definitions here in here for small. Operation, then I read that if it's under a certain acreage threshold. To meet the Farmland Assessment Act. You have to show eighty percent of your income comes from that small. Operation, otherwise then there are thresholds for production.
Well, is that right, Charlie? Eighty percent rule is that the agricultural operations gross acreage. For the farm that assessment, so as the ordinance doesn't actually spell it out, it just says that if the assessor's office was called right as at farmland. Right. And so I didn't dive into the Farmland Assessment Act to verify.
There is an exception. In there, and that exception. Is for small operations. And that's where they. And I I just copied every word, the word I was there, and it says the eighty percent threshold, but my my point again is that. You know, we have to decide what this is. Is this anything goes? And you just run a hotel operation, a yard, a campground, anywhere you want, if you grow a few things. Or is this for people who truly are engaged in agriculture, to give them some advantage? And utilize that. In a way that makes. They're beneficial to the valley, I guess, and then to themselves. But if it's just going to be to let any old folks run a campground, then we just ought to say so.
So I understand. What did, I think I understand what you're trying to say. We don't want any scams, we don't want citizens. Doing something that they otherwise wouldn't be allowed to do because they call it agriculture. Okay. But the purpose here is to enhance agricultural income. That's the purpose of agritourism.
Okay, but but why would we want to enhance agricultural income? I think the memo that you're reading is based on the general plan, which is where you're trying to encourage open space and maintain.
I'm reading the ordinance.
I mean, the memo, isn't it?
There's a memo and there's an ordinance.
An outline. But here's the point. For the realism. If I think of my forty. Three years. I moved that there, there are lots of different questions. Most of those dairy farmers that I can recall. Were not only working their dairy farm. They were working. Downtown at some place. They were in a hill field, working somewhere. They just couldn't make it. Even in middle state. It's like. If they're raising, let's see, there weren't many row crops being raised back then. It was mostly hay and pasture. And so. They relied on their downtown job. To raise their family. But they love farming, and they want to keep their farming operation going because they've been raised on the farm or they love. Working on the farm, whether that farm was small or large. So if the purpose here is to. For agritourism, give the farmer. Some additional income resources. Note here on line twenty three. Agritourism means a use, et cetera, to an agricultural use, which can provide a means of diversifying. Agriculture. And I, after reading the following lines, I thought maybe a better word is enhancing. Because if you diversify, you're doing something other than agriculture, but if you're enhancing. The agricultural income. By doing something agriculturally related.
So maybe maybe if it looks, maybe we should, at this juncture, look at. The purpose and intent, which is on line four ninety seven through five hundred.
And this is also a newly written purpose and intent. So in a lot of ways, I think we changed the purpose and intent and just say, from a general standpoint. We're not going to try and regulate the small farms because we don't know what a small farm is, to be totally honest with you. And and the goal here is we know what a big farm is, and we know that they can do agritourism events, meaning a pumpkin patch. And a pumpkin patch on a small farm, you know, so so let's pick, let's let's run this out. We've got one acre that's got pumpkin patch on that. Couple people show up at the house and pull some pumpkins off? Is that going to be really a nuisance to the neighborhood? Probably not, right? Or somebody picks it and sells it to someone else? Do they really need to have an agritourism exemption? No. Now, a twenty acre parcel that has. All these pumpkins out there in a farm, and they've got a store, and they've got wagon rides, that's a different scenario. They need parking, maybe that kind of, you know. Sufficient lighting and maybe the bathroom facilities. And I think that is more what we're trying to get at with agritourism. The other stuff, we just don't know what is a farm. And if it's a problem, right? Is is there a bunch of farms that are three acres that are operating right now? Probably. And are they a problem? Probably not. We probably, I mean, we aren't inundated with complaints. We've got a couple people who want to, who have land that are fairly sizable in the sort of shoreline zone, and we're saying, hey, this is what agritourism is. And so I I would make the proposal that we should just say, we we're only looking at big stuff because we don't know what the small farm really is. And and I think they're going to tell us, and I hope they would. We would just, I mean, part of our invite, or of our, of this should be, we should invite. The small farmers to come tell us what that is, right? If you're at a one acre and you've got a real reason to need an agricultural. But what do we even be at reason? I don't even know what it'd be technically.
Designation, I guess.
Designation. Yeah, so if you need an agricultural, agritourism designation, come tell us why.
Would be a conditional use.
Yeah, yeah, so so I I I just don't see the need in the small size. And I'm only putting up, I mean, because it's, it kind of fits, right? The same thing, if it's. Preserving open space, if it's, if you really need a little bit more, and it opens up, it 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 would cause us, it'll say, hey, look. The small, the small, we're not seeing this as a loophole because I've got three acres and I've got one little thing that I'm trying to rent out. I know it's illegal, but I'm going to try to do it this way because it's broad and I can find holes in it. And we're saying, hey, here's a draw the line. If you've got that, then you can go into the weeds. That's kind of the way I was thinking.
Let me pose a hypothetical. Do I, if if I have. With a free. Full one acre. And. I want to add some summer classes there, some picnic tables, I'm going to charge kids. Something to come to. Farm camp. And they're just going to come for a few hours in a day. I'm going to give them popsicles, I'm going to teach them about beekeeping. I'm going to teach them about animals, learning how to take care of their animals, their pets, stuff like that. But I'm going to charge. Do I have to get a license? Do I have to have zoning to figure out?
That is the exchange of money that.
Yeah, if it's just some volunteer, goodwill type thing, it probably would be an issue.
No, this is the exchange of money.
We're we're, we're going to charge the kids. Forty bucks a day to come in. And they're going to spend four hours a day, and they're going to learn all about beekeeping, and they're going to look at. Farm honeycomb and learn about lives of bees, and they're going to learn how to. From the burrs out of their dog, and they're going to. Pet cows or. You know, they're going to learn about farm stuff. Yeah, agriculture. At that point, they would need to fall into the use category in in the land use code.
There was a home on the property, and he lived in the farm, and they could get a home occupation permit of that kind of that, I think. Including outdoor.
We'll we'll take my acre and we'll just stick it out there by itself. Okay, and I got a bunch of beehives on it. But I can't do it. I can't have this farm camp. I can't. Get kids jazzed up about agriculture because I can't do agriculture, agritourism unless I've got nine acres or six acre. Well, that doesn't make sense.
Well, there's probably a way, look, make, you know, to me, that sounds like you're running a school or some sort of a instructional program that you could do. Without the agritourism part, which, if you read the definitions, includes the possibility of lodging, campgrounds, food services, hosting parties, weddings, reunions. You know, the bigger, more involved things that the community or that the neighbors might have a reason to worry about.
You're concerned about, we wouldn't only be putting a hotel on my.
Hotel and lodging. In various sorts.
Also, so this is the same discussion we had the last work session. We had it on the first. Yeah, and it kept going. It goes around and around because, so that same scenario. More than likely, if that happens, I mean, when that happens. You come and you get a a partial permit, and you could basically do some level of of that operation based off just being the parcel next to your house, right? So so now, let's 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 reverse that and say, okay, well, now I'm starting to do this, and it's grown. And now I've got, you know, a thousand kids coming home. All the neighbors are complaining. And what what do I, will you come and they, you're going to get a violation of some type because you did this or that, then you come in and work with to come up with a real plan. So the the problem becomes, we can't define, you know, like, it's just the same scenario of like, quarterback writing lessons, right? How do we define what a farm is for? For the agritourism, because where do I stop? I say, it's okay for that. But the whole, the code's got all this other stuff in it, too. So we either need to take everything out and write a specific code just for beekeeping in school. Or we just say, hey, look, we don't know what all this, what all else you could possibly do, kind of do what you're going to do and bring it in. Is kind of the the goal, like, I mean, I know that.
We're talking about the guy that owns one acre, and he wants to do this little operation. And now he's faced with, I gotta go to planning, I've got to come to a planning commission meeting, I gotta go to the county commission to have a few kids come over.
Is he actually a farm on one acre?
Well, it wouldn't qualify under any of this anyway, because you have to have quite a bit of income and then quite a bit of income.
Like, if I have an acre and I just want to teach yoga on my property, I mean, it's, I'm not a farm.
But but that's the problem with this making it qualify for the Farmland Assessment Act. Now you gotta have five acres. Before you can do any agritourism.
But yet we don't qualify for green belt unless you have five acres.
But that's, that's the. That's what I'm talking about. You gotta have five acres to qualify for green belt. I'm not asking to qualify for green belt. I'm not asking for a tax, property tax reduction because I'm doing agriculture, because I can't meet the. The definition or the requirements of the Farmland Assessment Act, green belt. But I raise crops, I raise bees. I want to have some kids get jazzed about agriculture. I want to.
That's that's a hobby versus like, being a farmer.
And what level is it okay for them to do that? Okay, so so is it okay for five students or is it okay for five hundred? Because because there's no cap. That's the problem with this ordinance.
You want to. You want to kill the opportunity for somebody because you're afraid somebody may have five hundred or five hundred students.
No, we want, we want to kill.
You don't have to kill opportunities. To prevent the hotel or the parking problems, always these can be regulated. If you create a parking problem, we've got ordinance that takes care of that. And it can be written in agritourism. But. Especially the small guys need the opportunity to get a little help to keep this little operation going, teach their kids. From my dad, he did a lesson, say, okay, kids, here's an acre, you raise some pumpkins.
You can do that.
Why can't you do that?
Yeah, you're talking about a hypothetical versus reality. We have, there are people in the valley right now scheming. To put these lodging operations, wedding venues together. On small properties that aren't probably really legit farms that they earn farming income from. Is that okay?
Not for the neighbors.
Is it okay? Yes or no?
I don't know if it's right for us to say somebody's scheming to do.
Well, they are. They're planning. They're they're developing their plan, creating a scheme, which is a method of operation. To run these. Whatever you want to call it, under the guise of agritourism. And they're small properties, homes surrounding them, and they probably don't earn much. Income from what they're doing in relation to their overall.
Agri.
Correct, yeah. Their overall income is greatly is from somewhere else. Is that okay, under the banner of agritourism? That's what we, you know, one of the things we have to decide.
The problem is, we we, when we dove into each one of these, we said, okay, so. Well, we get to the next thing, where we go, well, how do we regulate that for a one acre? Or how do we rate for, you know, how do we say, well, that doesn't, you know? Like, oh, we want to be in the half. You know, watershell hunting. Well, this guy lives next to the pond. We want to, we tried to cover every, we tried to overregulate. That's the problem with that. When we said, look. Or the thought is, let's just say agritourism is not the small farm. It's something else, but we don't really know what it is because nobody's really saying that. The only thing that people are saying is Airbnb type operations.
And I'm suggesting. I think you're suggesting let's overregulate to prevent.
No, I'm saying we don't regulate. I'm saying we don't have it out there. Sure you are, but you're, you know, you could say, you're you're only saying this ordinance applies if you have nine acres. Something else could apply. We just don't. And no one's bringing it to tell us what.
And and it can be added later, right? I mean, we're we're changing something now, so in. You know, being conservative about it and saying, listen. Let's limit it to this with the big guys and see how that goes. And if people come to us saying, hey, we want to, then, okay, you know what, let's let's reopen it, let's look at it again. But right now. Nobody's asking. We were getting, we were getting really mired down the weeds, and we just kind of, I I. I was all in the weeds, and when he kind of. Suggested. What if we actually step back from this? What if we just, with the information we have that we understand, and we're adding this level of amenity to help farmers out? Let's keep it here. And if people come in, this is the way I understood the last meeting, if people come in. You know, we have, we have ways to help them on a one by one basis, and if enough people come in, we reopen it again and we do it.
Because there's a thousand scenarios that say, hey, what if I raise bees, or what if I do this, and I come up with that? Well, that's great, but we don't know. And this, this is written so broadly that we can't, we can't try and narrow it down with everyone. We're saying, this is for the big guys. That, which is a one acre parcel and a school for bees, might be something else that doesn't have an Airbnb plug in it. And meaning a a or have a hotel type plug or glamping plug that you could do. Because those don't really, so it's either we take all of that out to have the small stuff, or we try and individually name. Because as soon as the conditional use permit comes before us, right, this is the problem is, I come and I I I do those classes once a month. And it's, you know, so you, I, we've narrowed it down all the way, and then they find the whole, well, now that I do this, you have to give me a conditional use permit for having a unauthorized. You know, accessory dwelling unit. Because it says here that I can't. And and we tried to narrow it all out, and we just came to the conclusion, it's like. This is a bigger, and this, that's what we have in mind. The small stuff, we don't know what that is. We really don't.
The conditional use permit, we're required to, because this proposed to be a conditional.
You do it all, okay.
Then you look at. It it comes before us to identify harmful.
But even even like, if it says in there that there's, we we look for health, safety, and welfare, the only reasons we can say no, right? But if we write the code, so so let's say they kind of, we, the problem is all the loopholes. In this.
I would err on the side of allowing free people to be free, to use their land if they like. But I recognize that there can be negative impacts beyond that, there's suspense. But one of the things we consider on conditional use permits is parking. Water and sewage, restrooms. I'm thinking of the event center they were putting up by the candid jets. And we look hard at access and parking. What are these people doing with parks? They're going to block the whole road, and nobody can get into driveway. If that's a problem, how are we going to mitigate that? I think we determined, it can't be mitigated. You can't do this big event center up there.
But you can tell us, we're going to build a a parking garage, and then he pushes it out two and three years. The same kind of thing. That's the hard part. That's why, that's why if we create a code that has plenty of holes in it, because we can't tell people, no, because we've created this opportunity, we've created it. We're saying, we don't understand the small part of it. They're saying the big stuff, we have examples. We kind of know what we're talking, what we're looking at. Small stuff, if we're trying to write, say, a one acre, a three acre. It just, it's so hard to know what it is that people have. Let them come tell us.
And I think it was often discussed that we're not stopping people. Like, so if you have one acre and you grow lavender, and you invite people to come over, pick lavender. Drop some money or whatever. If no one's complaining about it, right?
It happens.
It happens all the time. People sell their honey all the time. They they don't have. But I mean, maybe they keep it out licensing or whatever. They just sell their honey. They do.
They farm sales without, from the, or anything.
Probably direct, you could do, you do wholesale. Yeah. If you've got a vegetable stand, and it's allowing them to zone, then you can do that as well.
But when you say let free people be free, I don't think we're taking anything away by not giving, right? People are still going to do, and as long as no one's complaining, if they're not bothering anybody, then.
People start out with the rights to do this stuff. What we're doing is taking what?
I don't. Yeah. We're taking away, we're adding, right, that, right? So, well, certainly, I don't want that stuff here. It doesn't make this right, though. Okay.
Or do we get all our water back? Can I have my, all the water that's under my land? Well, listen to me, and no, but I'm I'm, that's a, that's a serious question. When we talk about. Rights, property rights. You know, we pick and choose. I hear people picking and choosing all the time. What about water? It's the most fundamental. Right? There's water. I have a neighbor, not my land, but I have a neighbor, you can get water with a shovel. And he have all the water he wants to do whatever he wants? No, he's been told he can't. So, you know, there's picking and choosing going on, and this is another. Situation where. There's got to be picking and choosing to maintain some semblance of order. And try to abide by the general plan. So that all the folks in the valley can kind of have a nice place to live with some order, and in certain areas, you get to do things, and certain areas, you don't. That's how I read it. And if you're agritourism, if you read the definition, is. Is about agriculture, trying to help a farm operation earn some more income and have something interesting for the people to do. I think that pumpkin thing over at the pasture is great. Very cool. Doesn't get in anybody's way. It's on a big piece of land and. Well organized. Those things are great. I haven't seen any other agritourism.
And then, so having that reverse, we were having a small school. I think they should, that should be great, but I don't think that's the, correct. I think that's something else.
I I agree.
And I don't think what that is, but I don't think that's the.
But I, I will be forgiven from having that. I can't. But either, I I will be prevented from having that. I can't, I can't use my land for my little bees.
You're no more prevented from doing that than you are from this. You have to go through a process like this does. And that's, that's.
If I walk in the office, you'll say, no, you can't do it. You said.
Here, here's a real example.
I think it's the same whether this ordinance is modified or changed or.
Here's a real example. So, that application that came forward on Creek View Drive. Uh, I, I thought I sort of knew where it was. I, son had friends over there, so I Googled it just to see. And what shows up at that address is a business called Refined USA Vitamin and Supplement Store. So obviously they have some sort of permit going, some sort of ability to operate a business on that property. So I think what you're talking about is the same thing. I I don't know who comes and goes from their refined USA vitamin and supplement store. But I assume people probably come and go to some degree, and that's exactly what you're saying. So there are ways in the county. To operate a business from a residence like that, I would assume.
We'd have to look at that one specifically because if it's home occupation, they could do it, be it. Selling it email and and that and postage, but we couldn't have sales conducted. Out of there, so they may be, maybe not.
Yeah, but well, but as well, like, so if it's a school or something, and I know you're making hypotheticals, but. In in that in particular, I think I remember learning when I first moved here ten plus years ago that um. To do a daycare or preschool, they needed a second entrance out of their home. Like, there were, there were ways to make that happen. I think there's still ways to do what you wanna do. It just wouldn't necessarily be this. It would be something else.
Well, but this is agricultural related.
Right.
Yeah, a whole school. I mean, uh. What it was made in isn't agriculture related.
This is tourism. Race is called agritourism.
Right, not, yeah, that's true.
Or maybe the name's misleading. We're, we're trying to say, okay. Right? Some way for a farmer to use his land to enhance his. Income he gets out that land to help him. If I retain that land.
So how do we define a farmer?
Well, by its use.
A farmer.
By by its use.
Use.
Raising crops, agricultural raising.
Is my garden okay?
Yeah.
My garden's okay. My my tomato plants on my balcony, are they okay?
Pardon?
Are my tomato plants that are sitting on my porch, are they okay? I'm just, I'm literally trying to figure out where the line is. If.
Well, this is the problem we ran into. We we don't wanna take rights away from anybody.
You can do this. Need to get everybody in headland havoc. We can figure out what potential problems are and figure out a way to solve and prevent problems. Without eliminating all the good things that can happen. Uh, make it easy. The guy that needs a little extra income does not have the time or the world to fall to kind of. Make an application. He's waiting for my students.
You have to do that anyway.
Sorry, no.
To do this, you do.
Yeah, I remember the uh, the pumpkin patch. That was a quick process.
That was a conditionally used.
Go through a conditionally used.
Yeah, but it was pretty quick.
Usually takes a couple months. Yeah. I I appreciate what you're saying, and we, we, we talked about that. We tried to, we looked at different scenarios and we talked about how tied. Talked about different ways of saying, well, this is this and that makes sense there. But then we just came to the conclusion that like, this is something else. And if there's something going on like that, it's not really happening, right? And if that's happening, somehow we need an open invitation to say, hey, if there's a problem with that happening. Then come talk to us, cause we're, we aren't really seeing that as a problem. We are seeing people coming and saying. I wanna do a, I'm gonna do agritourism so I can have a a glamping outfit. And then we're going, well, wait a minute. Are you really doing agritourism? What's your purpose here? How, you know, is this just, you know, you were doing Airbnb six months ago? What, what are we doing?
And if if we can't define for ourselves what a farmer is or whatnot, but. The state has, or the tax code has, then we can just piggyback off of that and say, well, they define it. So let's go with if you, if you.
That's for a whole different purpose.
No, I understand, but. It's definition that we can.
People with large land, right? What's the purpose? Yeah, why did they get a tax break and I don't?
Because the legislature decided, you're gonna have this much acreage and then we're gonna give you this extension.
Yeah. And then came up with five acres. Weber County did, cause other counties allow it.
I think.
Smaller league. I don't think it is.
The, the farmland assessment.
The five acres is.
That's the state code.
Box over county, it's smaller. I'm pretty sure.
Is, are you thinking of like the?
The five acre minimum that's placed in Weber County is not.
That that is a state code.
Are you sure?
Yes. I got it right here.
A couple of years ago.
It's up on the monitor that. That's kind of.
Back to line twenty-two where I suggest replacing. Diversifying, which means different things, using different things. But enhancing agriculture. Those really gotta be agriculture related. I I like the word change. Pointing, I would say the lamping. A picture of teepees. Cause I see signs. The RVs, people do all kinds of like, okay. What's I got to do with agriculture? Agreed.
And a teepee?
Yeah.
Well, I like to teach people about Indian heritage, how they lived off the land and flowers. Is that not agriculture?
Well, that's not glamping.
Like, they stay in the teepees just like the Indians used to.
You stay in a teepee with amenities or.
But that's the hard part.
No.
We can't separate it. We don't know.
What has glamping got to do with agriculture?
His point, what's a wedding got to do?
What's a wedding?
He had that.
Or birthday party.
What does that have to do with that?
Hold on, I'm gonna go to send it here.
Yeah, he wasn't.
I'm just raising the question is, you know, how do you, how do you word the definition? When on one hand you're saying agriculturally related, on the other hand, you're having a wedding and those people. It might be a nice setting, but so what?
And that's, that's the point is, do we want to take away the rights of the farms in this? That they could do a wedding so that we could appease some, a smaller portion? Or are we saying, we kind of understand that you're gonna do a wedding in a bigger area? That kind of makes sense. And then one acre. I don't know that it makes sense for us to let you do a, a big wedding venue, cause you don't have enough acreage.
I'm wondering to kind of blend these together is if we go back in and look at the use table. And take away certain things that we feel would be restrictive with small type operations. Where we don't allow, you know, glamping or those type of things. And just have an N associated with them. And and then. On the other, and have more education type uses. And then in the larger ones, we look at uses that like glamping and things like that that could be conditional. If they met the parking and the sewer and the regulations associated with that. And then, I wonder if it's just that way we have kind of, we address maybe your concerns. And then we address your concerns that with not enough specificity on the small operations.
Yeah, sure.
What about the agritourism proposal? And it be uh, utilized in residential neighborhoods?
Good question. We did talk about that.
Like FD, FD three.
Yeah.
Can you have that, those types of operations in a residential, what's essentially a residential neighborhood?
Kind of a lovely AV degree. I think it is the FD three.
Think there is, and maybe, you know, in those areas, it's maybe not appropriate. To having, talking about having weddings and. And all of these special events basically in a residential neighborhood. And in those areas, you have to take into consideration parking. Um, hours of operation, you know, headlights shining into neighbors' properties and do we want to be looking at those type of things?
But like, the problem concern there is the same thing we run into. It's like, okay, we're taking away the rights. Of the farmers who happened to have been zoned AV three or whatever. AV F R F B or the different three zones, but I own twelve acres or. Ten, twelve, you know, I think my neighbor has twelve acres right there. If he did a wedding, it would be gorgeous. He does have cows and stuff. So he could easily get away with it. And he could do it and it really wouldn't bother any of the neighbors. But we're saying, oh, no, you can't do it in AV three. So. Like, it really, it it becomes so difficult that you need to, I think you need to say, if we say from the big stuff. We, we know you're at least not gonna bother everybody. The small stuff, I don't think it's bothering people.
Well, Rick, I like your suggestion. Pick out those things that are not.
So how do you define that? So small? I don't know that it can be done, cause we've been talked about dude ranches, right? We tried to define that, but yet, where does a dude ranch fall in? Like, okay, so dude ranch is that riding a horse? Is that teaching people how to ride? Is that actually going out and roping cattle? You know, that's just one example. And and how big can that be? Is it horseback riding? I teach horseback riding on that one acre parcel. Horsing, horse, horseback riding or using horses in general has been used in agriculture for a hundred years. It should absolutely be part of agriculture. Cause I sometimes use a plow or I sometimes rope a cow with it occasionally. So teaching horses is part of my agricultural operation. Or, you know, driving a tractor is part of my agricultural operation. I should be able to sell tractors there. There's such a connection that you can make that we can't close the loops in, in this ordinance to say. No, so if we leave it open, there's, there's just whatever you wanna do.
And we can't tell that because.
Maybe the answer is you go into AV three. Does it, I'm using AV three cause I'm more familiar with it. Agriculture is a preferred use in AV three, right? Okay. Do the use that's in AV three now allow me to have my little bee cans?
So. I think we could.
See, maybe these small things, cause he put in the zone and. Rather than, cause agritourism is a funny word. It's tourism with agriculture and they're two separate things. Well, maybe the the small stuff, you do in the AV three, cause it's really agriculture. Tourism is something else, for the big places.
But this is the agritourism. That's what I'm saying. We make a big thing, like we make, we have this, then we have something completely different.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the way I see this. Is this is, this is for sunny fields, the McFarlands, the. Whatever farms that are there, that even if somebody wants to create one, has one, fantastic, like have at it, right? Not taking anything away. The hypotheticals that we don't know, whatever they are, this isn't for them. Because we can't, we can't sit and try and imagine them up for everybody.
No, but I'm, I'm familiar with some of these things that go on, cause I get them with a racket. And they're going over to this farm and they're doing this, and they're going over here and there.
And and so, so they're currently doing that. Are they in here trying to get the agritour, the agritourism things already in place? Are they applying for it? Cause they've already been doing it. So why are, what? So it might be illegal today and they've been doing it. So if we change this to somehow narrow that down of those specifics, are we really doing anything? Cause are they gonna come in and try and get a permit anyway? You, my point there being like, okay, so we've got farms that are doing things and kids going over there working or, you know, and they're doing it. And they're not in here asking for the agritourism exemption right now. Why is that? And what we, so we're not seeing any of those. And but that's, but but that's, but but let me tell you what would cause them to need to come in here. Is someone has a problem with your kids going over there, cause they did some, I don't know, whatever it is above them. And so they reported the county. The county says, well, technically it's against the rules, right? That's what caused it. But that has yet not happened that we know of. And I mean, really been brought to say, hey, this beekeeper has a problem.
I'm familiar with some petting zoo kind of stuff and, you know. Where.
Do you allow petting zoos?
Where, is that agritourism or is that something else?
Uh, it's something else. It's a separate uh, use.
So this is, this is so widespread in this, that that's what we found out is it's like, we want you to be creative. And we don't know how to like put a can on that. But the only can we can really say is, if it's big enough, people aren't gonna have a problem with it. Right? Like, if you've got a hundred acres and you put on a big giant party, but you're so far away, no one can see anything. Did it really happen? Just like a tree fall? You know what I mean? And that's kind of what we're getting at with this is like, we don't really know. So tell us.
I don't think we wanna encourage people to do things that are contrary to the ordinance.
Yeah, but I don't think we're.
But is this the right ordinance for them? That's the concern.
And that's what I'm wondering. If we see things that would be eliminated by this ordinance, like the things that were. But those could be good things. Let's stick them in there.
In my mind, none of the hypotheticals you mentioned are agritourism. They're something else. Local kids going over to learn something.
Petting zoo.
The kids are not tourists. They're not being encouraged to come to parties, events, spend the night. You know, all the things that people, that where the money's at. The money comes when you're selling. Uh, special dinners and, you know, all the things that are going to attract people to this. And cause people to push the envelope and cause neighbors to have issues and whatever else. Those are the big ones. Those aren't kids coming over to learn how to do something. That's something else. Uh, in my mind, this is pretty clear and my read, the adjustments are. Pretty good, um, limiting it to a certain size takes a lot of the variability or a lot of the challenge off the table. I still have to ask the question about parties and weddings. You know, if the decision is, yeah, that's part of it. Okay, fine. We just have to do that, knowing that it. Well, you know, doesn't really have anything to do with farm, but okay, if we allow it.
I think that's, that's, I mean, that's exactly where I'm at. This, this is agritourism. This is Black Island Farms. This is the the corn maze that has the the pictures. This, this is what that is. What we're talking about in small stuff is something else.
Yeah, clearly. In my mind, it's something else.
And do we know really what that is? Well, no, cause no one's really telling us.
And that's, in my, you know, that's between somebody who wants to get permission if they need it. And the county to figure out. And if it has to be risen to the next level. Change a code, then that's a whole.
And we talked about development agreements for things. Say your school is operation, it does not have a home anywhere, then you do a development agreement that allows it. Because we just don't know what people can do. And we wanna let them do it. We just don't wanna.
Most of the, well, actually all the agritourism operations that we've issued thus far are on larger pieces of property. And have been, they're operational here. Where are some examples of those, right? Um, we have that pumpkin patch, um, that is over by the monastery. Um, I'm not sure the acres there, but it's a large amount of acreage.
It's probably closer to forty.
Yeah, I thought it was like thirty something. Like thirty-three, thirty-five.
Yeah, and they also use the monastery too.
We also have one going, uh, Monte Cristo, um, and that's a very large operation, about forty. Um, and most all of the ones that we do have are on larger pieces of property. And, yeah.
No, Rick's gonna be.
I'll, I'll be okay. Bye.
No.
We're good. Yes, we have it. Uh, as far as tourism goes, we don't have what you call the tourism, per se. What we do have.
If anything you need to have for you.
But I didn't, in this conversation, no, I just, I just need to make sure when you guys are ready to round up the conversation. What are the final touches that we'd like to see?
So the next step is public hearing?
That's, I would like you to go there, but if you guys aren't ready yet, we can go to another report session. That's, I would like you to go there, but if you guys aren't ready yet, we can go to another report session.
And we're, whatever, we're not wanting to rush this through, so if you feel like we need to do more work sessions on this, we're fine. If you wanna go to a public hearing, we're fine. Um, I know that in the last meeting too, we were, we got down to some of the, um. Regulations as far as width and things like that goes. Um, we can get to that eventually tonight if you'd like, or if you'd like to, you know, talk some more about the uses, we can. Yeah, whatever you base.
I know if there's three hundred feet minimum in here. And that's of course not gonna work with the small parcel.
It won't.
And back, you could have fifty acres with two hundred feet frontage, you couldn't do it, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know why we have to have three hundred feet of frontage.
I think because you, you do have the, the joint property scenario, when you have a narrow piece of property, no matter what you do. Is going to be observed and potentially impactful to the other. Property and, you know, hopefully there, you know, maybe there's a farm field on either side, but maybe there is. The way houses are popping up all over the place, it could be, someone could have a ten acre home site right next door.
Yeah.
To a fifty acre farming operation.
Yeah.
And if that farming operation is narrow or. Contorted, then they are going to. Be a nuisance.
What is Western Weber thinking about agritourism?
They like it. Um, we, we're still. In the, you know, we had, well, we got our approval from them either. But so, they haven't had too many operations. They have about three out there. And most of them are all geared around Halloween.
So McFarland Farms runs the entire monastery and the. Um, pumpkin thing.
Mm-hmm.
And they're primarily based. In the Ogden area. Right?
Yeah.
So do they run various agritourism or are they just all farm stand operations? You know, it's, or in wherever they are.
They have one, Rick. There's one out west and, and Western Weber planning it.
That's right.
At the McFarland family.
Is that a farm stand or is that something?
No, it's, it's a pumpkin patch. It's a larger ac- actual agritourism corn maze.
Yeah.
Rick, do, I mean, could Steve cover for you? I know you need to go.
No, no, I'm totally good.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it can, it can wait.
All right.
Girls will survive.
I want to get through this. I do, but I don't know. We're not making as much progress as I hope.
No, and. Um. You know, ultimately. Here, you know, we could, we, we could either look at the larger acreage or we could look more at the use table. And try to narrow it down and come back with you with more specifics, um, on that. Um, yeah, yeah, it's really where you guys are at on this, because I know that it kind of seems like. You know, we're, over here, we're looking at more larger acreage, over here, we're looking at more, um. You know, on smaller and different type acreages, which we could still accommodate, which is gonna require more work. To go through each use specifically and talk about each one of those uses and the impacts and mitigations that would have. And if we do that, I really would recommend that we look at more work sessions, um, to, to hone down on that. If we wanna just look at, you know, staying a six acre or ten acre or twenty acre minimum for that. I think we're close to going to a public hearing. Um, for that. And, and like I said, I'm not trying to rush a public hearing on this. Um, we, I wanna, this is an ordinance, we wanna make sure we get it right. And so I appreciate your deliberation on this and your thoughtful consideration, because, um. Ordinances are permanent until they're amended, so, um.
But I think that's a reason to be conservative.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we start out, because we can have.
Yeah.
But we can't take away once we put it in, right?
Well, we can, we can come back.
But someone comes in in the meantime.
They're in the door.
Right, so, so I think, I, I just. I'm more of a conservative approach.
Yeah.
For certain.
And, and I could see some benefits from that, you know, going the, the route of looking at larger acreage. And then when we do have people come in, and we could talk to them about, you know, you probably should look at amending the ordinance. And let's see, you know, what the flavor is of the. The approval body, uh, looking at that, but then maybe look at, you know, narrowing those uses down.
The practical problem with amending the ordinance is. Time consuming, expensive.
It is.
It's time consuming for staff. And it's expensive for the applicant.
Correct.
And these are little people that are talking about, maybe I could get five hundred dollars a year off this and.
Yeah.
And now we can't.
And I, and I'm, well, just hearing what I heard, Rick, just reinforcing my outlook that. It's the bigger operation, the, it's, people are going to do this where the money's at, the small. I, you know, I say hypothetical, but the smaller potential. They're probably not going to cause trouble. We're not going to come and seek permission. They're gonna continue to do what they're doing, right or wrong. Because there's no money in it. And that's a different thing than this. So I continue, everything I'm hearing. Continues that this ought to be focused on. Bigger operations. Where if you're going to allow parties and whatnot, then you have less margin for error and problem. And you can be more assured that they're really operating a farm operation. If you got a little piece of land that. You know, maybe the person doesn't even live there who owns it and they wanna, you know, run a fancy food operation. Well, again, that's not agritourism. That's something else. And deal with it, you know, the county will have to deal with that. But if we wanna talk about agritourism. I think this is it. It's bigger. It has a lot of moving parts and they do get the opportunity maybe for some lodging and stuff. It is ancillary to their farming operation, but that's okay, if that's what the intent is.
Maybe the way to address it is split this into two parts. Because I don't think there's anything tourism about a wedding.
Yeah.
But I would have disagreed.
Okay.
Because tourism, to find a tourist, it was to be someone coming in from outside, right? You're touring or coming through.
Well, you're going on your family vacation and you're gonna go somewhere to do.
Or I, I tour Ogden Valley while I go to a wedding. I mean, so.
My neighbor's getting married. I mean, he's down at the reception center in Ogden. Am I a tourist when I go down there to that wedding? Probably not.
But if you fly people in from New York, are you a tourist?
Anyway, what I'm suggesting, maybe I'd say there'd be.
You're going to an event.
Yeah.
And split this into kind of two areas. One addresses the small thing. In the small areas, you can't do glamping and you can't do weddings and you can't do this stuff that you need a big area to do.
Yeah.
You can do small things. But you can't do the big ones that we're worried about.
Define size in, in that, pardon? Define, in that specification, define. Small size property. Where would you split the, make the split above and below what acreage?
Twenty, twenty two.
Well.
If, you would have to, I'd have to think that, have to do it, and I'd. Be more reluctant to do it by, by than by impact.
Sometimes it's hard to say what type of impact that's gonna have depending on what's the, the adjacent uses. Um, and then, but that's where we have the conditional use permit that comes into place where we can look at the impact that it may have on those uses. But I think we also do, do need to look at size. Um, I think. It's kind of a balancing act of. Size and use and potential impacts. Um. And we can't foresee everything, you know, w- we're. We're not gods. We, we, we're just trying to do the best we can.
We can support, we can support the impact.
Yeah.
Parking, uh, sanitation, stuff like that. If you're gonna do this activity, you have to meet minimum standards of parking and sanitation.
And we can address that under the conditional use permit.
That's right.
Um, and we do that already. Yeah, they have to work through the health department or, or they have to get adequate sewer infrastructure and everything. And to address, you know, how much parking is gonna be needed for X amount of people, um. Mitigating headlights, times of parties and impacts that they have on neighbors. Which was some of the things we looked at by Ken Waitley's place, you know, when they did that wedding day.
So let's say your kid's school on one acre. You, you'd have to put that infrastructure in. You'd have to have parking. You know, I mean, those are all things that have to be there, even in that, that only makes five hundred dollars.
Parents are gonna drop the kids off.
They have to have a place to park.
We got a little place where they can pull off the road and drop their kids off. We're gonna have some porta potties in there.
Well, the farmer doesn't like porta potties.
This is the temporary operation that'll be going first.
So do they need an agritourism? And that's, that's the problem.
Well, they ought to be allowed to do it.
That's a special event.
Because it's connected to the agriculture. That's why I suggest maybe put it in the zone.
So there's certain uses that can already be allowed in certain areas right now. But it's kind of being described under things that we're already talking about. You know, when you talked about the petting zoo. When we talk about special events, there's ways in which they can do special events in the Ogden Valley. Um, they just have to address certain things. And in those situations, you could get by with. Porta potties and things like that, because it's only a, a two or three day event. Um, and they're only allowed so many per calendar year.
I mean, I, I just have to push back on that a little bit, Commissioner Burton, because. On one hand, we're describing a very small niche operation where they're making a small minimum. The other hand, we're saying, well, now they can afford to buy porta potty, get porta potties and. And clear land for parking and do all this. Now, those are two separate things. If I'm doing a school where we walk through. The field and it's very small, very small. And or I'm needing to have porta potties because my house facilities aren't enough. Those are two separate things. And, and so we can't really have it both ways. It's, it's gonna be, like, we can't sit and try and. Define, well, we, we should, we need to allow the real small, because we don't know what those are. Because it could be anything. It could be bees, it could be, I, I broke to, I could be a complete expert in tomatoes, but I live in an apartment and I should be able to bring people in. Well, okay, how do we say yes or no, right?
Maybe we start with the large first, because that's easy. Right?
That's, that's where we go.
If you're gonna do hotels, it, it, do they have to be agriculture related?
There were, yeah, there were.
This, everything in this.
We wanted to see, to make sure that it wasn't.
What we're, yeah, what we're going after is. Let's just use Sunnyville or even the product better. If they wanted to do a wedding here. It's like, well, it's a beautiful location. It's got space, they've got animals, they, they wanna do it on a, on a cart, that's what they wanna do and they wanna charge to do it. Is that, that's. Well, that, that's subject to the quantities. We kind of talked about that a little bit, but. In general, if you have at least ten or so, or maybe five. Whatever we decide, six, uh, uh, my suggestion would nine. But it's not gonna be a huge impact. Uh, on, on the people, of the, the surrounding people. That's, it's, it's, it's fairly manageable.
In the table, can we put a minimum acreage?
We can. And last time we talked about six, because you had three acres for a resident. And so we looked at, I believe, three acres more, so we're looking at six.
I think he said it was operationally six.
Yes.
Operating, a farm, yes, six operating in the agriculture.
Yes, yeah.
But that, and that, that, and again, those details are so tough, right? That's why, that's why this was such a tough thing. It's like, okay.
It is.
What's six? Because I work in the farm, my house is. I need that house in order to clean my vegetables, or I need that house to wash myself from working in the farm. It's part of my farm, like, so it just becomes so hard to draw a line. And you, so that's where we're like.
I think in, in, in this, it was saying the parking doesn't count. The primary residence and surrounding doesn't count. Towns or whatever, you know, amenities don't count.
Yeah.
Just the farming business acreage counts.
As I say, if that were me and I had a pond and five acres, I'd say the pond is part of my agricultural operation, because I need the water, right? All those things. So, like I said, that's where I came to nine. And I'm like, look, it, it preserves two, it kind of solves the point of like, hey, why are we do this at all? Because we wanna keep farms. Well, let's, let's, let's say, well, let's keep two that kind of solves all those things. And then it makes it so it's at least non-invasive for the other.
The truth is, and, again, going back to what's agriculture or not, in the valley. If you're farming nine acres, you're not really farming, you're playing around with some extra money.
Yeah.
Because you're not making any money.
Right.
Unless you're growing something super valuable that. That I'm not aware of.
Yeah, most of those farmers are gonna be people who have another job.
Yeah.
Um, this is just a little supplemental income.
Right.
For them.
And, and so that.
We wanna help them. So, I mean, if, if you guys are okay with us looking right now at just an acreage requirement. We asked you to look at the lot width requirements and give us input and we haven't heard any input. So we're thinking that you're okay with the width standards.
Well, my input is. Some cases you're going a little less.
Go less. But if we look at an acreage requirement, do we wanna go less? If we have six acres or nine acres, it is three hundred.
If you relate a use to a minimum amount of acres, okay? If you're gonna have glamping, you gotta have X acres. If you're gonna have a hotel, then you gotta have X acres. If you're gonna have, uh. Wedding reception.
I think some of that's already in here. So how many, how many dwelling units you get?
Super acreage, things like that. I did not provide any, because this was one of my thoughts too, when we, this is like, um, so the, 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 so, well, I think that what you're, what you're referencing is. The, the, there's one is the, the lot roadside. And the other is that, like, okay, if you're going to have a place for someone to come and. Say I'm a, I'm a tomato specialist and. I'm gonna have someone flying in from wherever and he's gonna stay in this trailer inside of the house or whatever. You need to have that, that trailer or whatever, so many feet from.
Right.
Either adjoining residence or adjoining property line. That, I think, are the ones we were, we did not provide input.
It's more, how do we protect the abiding residents?
That's the impact.
Yeah.
And again, I, I just keep going back to reality and, you know, people grow hay in the valley and a few other things here and there. There's not gonna be a lot of coming. Dog and valley to learn special, whatever. They're gonna come because somebody's offering them some place to stay, it's probably a cheap price, a unique setting and give it a go.
I think it'd be great if we could get a, a corner piece at some place like, in Portland, that would be cool.
Yeah.
And then people would tell. That was traffic. There's traffic to the lake, right? I mean, there's boats lined up all the way.
Well, what if we have one more work session on this where we talk a little bit more about these things specifically? And but we do come back with an acreage requirement, um, and give justifications for that, whether it's. Five, six, nine.
Or one. For some uses.
Or one, yeah, I mean, what's your limited.
I, I, I think we, I think that's something else.
Okay.
I really, maybe we can think about that something else.
Okay.
You know, some, something where they're really not a farm. Or they're really not, because anything more than a hobbyist in whatever, maybe an expert, but still a hobbyist in some field. But it's not a farm. It's not really agriculture, agribusiness, which I read this, the drug is support agriculture.
I, I think the hard part is, and we all, we're, we're trying to, because it's the right thing to, we're trying to squeeze, we're trying to make it as small as possible, right? We don't wanna create a whole bunch more stuff, but. Uh, the hard part is, I think we should hear say. Agritourism, this is intent, this is this. Agrib, I don't know, agri.
Education.
Agri, agri, agrication, I don't know.
Yeah.
And that can be small and that can be, you know, you can have that, but there's a different level of. You know, uh, guidelines for that, right? It's like, okay, so you're, you're a professional, you know, beekeeper or whatever. You gotta have an education, some, some certification or some kind of resume, right? So those are different things than this. That's, that's, I think they're just separate and we just say, this is big, this is.
And I was.
Well, that would reach the happy medium that we were kind of talking about if we had. I like that, that agri. For agri, education, small and agritourism on a larger scale.
Why not rename agritourism to agribusiness? Because tourism is really not. Because tourism is really not related to larger stuff.
It is, if you're, I think, if you're throwing weddings and parties and that kind of thing. But somebody brought, just in a conversation, they said, well, and it was somebody who lives near one of, um, one of the things that might come into the, for consideration. And they go, what about in the winter? There's no agriculture going on here in the winter, can they still rent their, their dwelling out in the winter? When it's clearly not involved with agriculture.
Well, there are some that are, when you look at sleigh rides and different things.
That is that agricultural. So again, that's, you know, the horse, but, but, but in this case, they were talking about lodging.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the conversation was, well, if they can do it, why can't everybody throw up the earth or whatever? Who has, you know, bales some hay, bales some hay, you can throw up the earth. I think that could be where this is going, because in the valley, in the winter, that's where the money's at. For lodging, it's the winter, not the summer so much.
Yeah.
So, I think we have to recognize that.
I like your idea, Rick, in splitting this into parts. We got agri education or agri small. We, we got a small component, but then we got this bigger one. You were really talking about. And they're two parts of the same thing. They have different requirements.
Yeah. And I think they're, they all fall under a type of business, so I, 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 when you look at the bigger planning scheme, um, they call these agri uses, agritourism and other communities, and so that's why it's been, you know, deemed as agritourism instead of agribusiness.
But this is also about supplemental income for a farmer who's struggling.
Yeah.
To make his, you know, uh, taxes or whatever, right? Like, this is about supplemental income for a farmer. If I wanna teach a class, it's like you gave the example of they're making five hundred bucks in the year. That's not the same in my mind as the supplemental income to help a farmer who's a, who's a farmer, right? Like an actual working, the farm, that's their main source of income. That five hundred bucks, is it, is it helpful? Yeah, but it's not, it's not the five, ten thousand dollars gonna help us to, you know, be able to buy, I don't know, seeds, I'm not a farmer, um, but.
I know a guy up there that is doing, he's just kind of his income. And he does supplemental with classes. I'm sure he is.
I was saying, because I, I've homeschooled the last three years, and I've taught quite a bit of my classes about native Uton plans and like all this stuff. Does that mean I get to be like?
Means you were in violation.
I, I didn't take money. Whatever. But, but the point being, like, I don't think because the teaching has to do with agriculture, you qualify, you have to be a working, trying to sustain farm, right? And this is to help you. I, 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 I worry that we're getting down into like, I have a veg patch. I'm teaching yoga in it. I'm offering them a smoothie at the end from some of the, you know, fruits and veg that I grow. And I'm, and I'm charging, yeah, sure, why not? And, and now I qualify. I'm not a farmer, I have a veg patch, right? Like, it's a hobby, it's a, an amenity, but it's not, and, and I don't think that that means I can't do what I'm doing, but I have to go get a business license. I have to go do something else, not this, something, I can still do it with a different uh, application or license or, you know.
Yeah, if you're able to do like some type of small farm stand or. Yeah, and we just have to look at the use table and see where it's allowed and where it's not.
It's uncomfortable if we don't shut the door on people, small people. Especially, I'm from doing something, something that their income with their agriculture related.
I, I don't think, and I, I, I totally agree with you. As someone who has done a farm, I ran a little farm in Willard. And, um, that's where I have, that's where I, I am fairly confident that they used to be like a two acre minimum. At one point, in, in Ox River County. But either way, when we did that, I mean, it's really hard to make an income, but that is, you know, we're not shutting the door on anybody. Everybody still has the same opportunity to come and do this. So the person that brought this is, is paying some pain to try and get this here, that they've submitted money to get this here. This isn't a county, but thing. And, and now we're, we're making changes to it. So, so is it really, are, are we shutting things down? I would say no, because we're still allowing them to do it. They just, they might have to do it a different way. And it might be harder, and how do we, how do we change that? That's, I think that's a different, that's a, like a different question, because, you know, we, we talked about this, so if someone comes and they say, hey, we're, I'm a, I'm a bee specialist, I wanna do this, or, you know, and, and you can somehow glean that they're, are legit. You know, or they, they really do do this, are we gonna say, no, no, they're gonna say, well, we're gonna try and find a way for this to work. It might not fit here, but there'll be other places, or we can look at a deployment agreement. And yeah, they're both gonna be challenging. Unfortunately, things have to be challenging. I wish they didn't, the bad actors, whether, wherever they are.
I think you have to look at the uniqueness of the valley and that there's a lack of lodging. Lodging is attractive, if you can make money doing it. It's not super expensive to get involved in it, people want to do it. People are doing it, and if this pushes the door open to that, then you're gonna have unintended consequences.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you want those consequences, it's great. If you don't, then you have to, I think, be aware of it at this juncture and deal with it.
Well, I think when we start looking at lodging and glamping and those type of things, that's gonna, most likely, like a use table, it's gonna fall under agri tourism large, and then the education is gonna be, you know, educating people about beekeeping or, um, you, you know, or agri teaching opportunities. And then that use table will be a lot on the smaller acreage size.
And so is?
No, that's what I just. We're looking at lodging and clamping on the agritourism large.
I think that's a tough one too. I mean, the small one would be too, because, because, I mean, there's a thousand viable things. And I, do I think it should be done? Yeah, I think it should, but I don't know how you do it, to be honest with you, because it's like, I'm a, I'm a bee expert. And people really want to fly in and stay with me, right? Should I be able to let them rent my rooms, right? And, you know, most of what I think says, yeah, but the problem is there's outside negative, you know, there's, there's, there's bad actors, right? Where, you know, they're gonna try and use that code when they may not be that bee expert. And that's, that's where we come into a problem, because it's like, that guy, I'm happy with.
The problem is the negative impact.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
How do we regulate the negative impact?
And is it conditional use permit?
Yeah.
But the conditional use permit, as the legal laws tells, we have to approve it if there's way.
They can mitigate the negative.
No, not the negative impact, just the health, safety and welfare.
Well, that's negative.
No.
Yeah.
Aesthetic of something else.
Yeah, we, once we open the door for a conditional use permit, it makes it more difficult to deny that conditional use permit. To be honest with you, when we denied that wedding operation on Kim Wheatley's property, staff and on the legal side of it, we were nervous about them appealing that situation because we felt that the motion and the findings that you made on that were probably not substantial enough to stand up in court, but they never appealed.
How big of a property?
Portman's given us better training on this.
How, how big of a property?
That property was five acres, ten acres.
Ten acres?
Yeah, it wasn't that big.
It wasn't an agritourism though.
It wasn't, it was totally, yeah.
It's no longer allowed in the, in that zone.
Yeah.
We need because of that.
Yeah, if you step back and look at this, this, do we err on the side of overregulation or?
But that's the thing is, are we overregulating if we don't create a regulation?
We have the error on the side of the. I think we have to look at reality. There's hardly any agritourism in the valley. And what, what's there, the pumpkin, whatever, is okay, it's good. Opening the, lodging is a deficiency in the valley. Opening that door is going to, in reality, create potential problems that are hard, going to be hard to deal with for the county and everyone else, so. The realities are there in front of us. And I think this deals with most of them, and the small stuff, again, is something else that I think it, it might be easier just to pull it out of here and just deal with it in a more simplified way, some other place. Where you don't have lodging, you don't have food service, you don't have birthday parties or weddings or anything like that to deal with. All you have are small ad hoc situations where you're not bringing in large groups.
I, I think that you're right, that, you know, in some ways saying agritourism doesn't apply to one acre is, is like saying, well, I only have one acre, I can't do that. Well, okay, you're, you're not really taking away a right, I guess. But you, you are in some ways, right? Just like how, you know, I feel like I should be entitled, not that I have a farm, but I should be able to have a farm and do green belt, because I, I feel that way, right? But at the end of the day, the, the problem is that if by, by trying to squeeze that in, we are overregulating because we're trying to narrow it down even smaller, which might hinder the big, even if the small, we're trying to open the door for. But only because we're trying to write it. And I think in a lot of ways, uh, saying, well, that's what, you know, the, the definitions, because if we try and build a world based on paper ordinance and perfect, you know, all of these, all these ordinances are just to try and mitigate nuisance, right? I mean, that's the end goal, is to, to create a good environment and mitigate nuisance. And if someone's teaching a class, I would imagine that the nuisance factor is so small. Once it becomes big enough, it will create a nuisance, and then there'll be a financial incentive for them to go through the process. So I think the market's kind of already created a, hey, you know, if your kids are, if you have one or two cows and you sell milk or whatever, you still have some operation, but, you know, they've created an avenue, and that is still evolving. And then we could get them to come and say, I actually, tell us what those are, right? And that becomes, well, they see a viability, and then they come and do it. Um, where this is like, hey, if I can even just get in the door, I can connect the dots to allow me to do the thing I really want to do, and that could be clamping or whatever, and that. I think that is generally what the community has said. We don't wanna just let that be open source.
So the size limit address, some of this negative problem. In other words, you don't even have to get a permit, you're allowed to have teach classes on your property about agriculture for ten or less people at a time. Or if you're not charging money.
And even if you, what if you're charging, you take donations.
You would have to work it as a home occupation.
Okay.
And then as a home occupation, you would have to reside on the site, and it actually has to be conducted inside the home.
But you could say, why didn't the building?
And it can only be a certain percentage of that use.
I want to just enter, I, I don't know much about this, but, uh, herbalness. You know what herbalism is? Okay, well, I'm kind of clueless on that. But then take a lot of space, where you can do all these herbs and teach classes and teach about them and stuff like that. Okay, that doesn't need ten acres, that means a garden.
And people do that already. I, I think.
So they should be allowed to do it, and they're gonna charge money for the people to come take the classes. Do they have to have a business license?
Yeah.
They're supposed to.
They'll be like, for piano lessons, it's a service. This would be a service. And so when you're offering different types of services like that, it can be done as a home occupation. But you have to meet the home occupation regulation, and then you just get a business license.
So the piano teacher has had business.
They do.
They do, whether or not they get one, but they're supposed to.
Yeah.
Right, so.
They're supposed to, um, you know, when you're doing hair, um, which, you know, I don't have that issue. And that, you know, that.
And, and I bring up yoga because it's something that I've seen happen in the valley everywhere, on the lake, right? Everyone meet here, the teacher gets paid five, ten bucks per person, and everyone goes on their stuffboard and they do yoga on the lake. That happens all the time, uh, Sam Hill Farms, when it was back in the neighborhood, um, the, the mom led yoga classes there. I, I highly doubt they got special event licenses. Uh, I'm not looking to get anybody in trouble, but nobody complains about it. So it just happened, everyone enjoyed it. The neighbors seemed fine with it, people who came were fine with it, everybody kept clean and quiet. It didn't get, I, I'm not an advocate of people doing things that are not supposed to be done. But it's kind of, you know, one of those things, like, these things are already happening. We're not taking anything away, it's already happening. And in fact, if we put a regulation, we're saying, well, hold on, you can only do it this way.
Trying to make the piano teacher feel guilty because she's operating illegally.
No.
That it's happening all the time.
It, it does happen a, a lot, and we don't go out and enforce those things.
Yeah.
Unless people call on us, because we just don't have the staff to do that.
But that's my point, right?
I'm not saying it makes it right.
People don't complain.
But.
It's not a problem.
Well, it, it is a problem because they're in violation of our ordinance. We're not gonna go out and enforce.
Yeah.
So, I, I just, I wanna be straight up with you that those type of operations or services, they are required to have a business license. Do we enforce that? No, we only enforce, enforce when people call in and there's violations.
Sure.
Just because we only have two enforcement officers, yeah.
Well, in our position here, as you were saying, we're, we're trying to mitigate impact. We, we want them to have all the freedom, but it stops what bothers people.
And if we have no, if the ordinance didn't excel that piano, like, if, if the piano teacher becomes so big that they don't have a parking situation, right? But we don't have an ordinance that says that they can't do it, well, then they can do whatever they want, really. And that's, that's why there's a rule, because we want them to follow the rule, really, if it's a problem. If it's not, then it's like, does it really apply?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of the things that you're talking about with education could possibly be done as a home op. But just, but then parking, you know, that becomes an issue.
And so like I say, there's so many scenarios, it's too hard for us to try and identify as right code, or right ordinance for, and right ordinance, like, that would, like, as you said, it would, as Commissioner Wampur said, it would, it would limit to what that would be, because we're saying, where there could be something that comes up that, you know, we just don't know. I, I don't know how we invite it to say, just, if you got a, if you got an operation and wanna just come help us, we'll maybe do a county-led thing to make it a real thing, you know, that, yeah. Cause, cause I think we wanna encourage those types of operations, that's in the general plan, that we want to encourage that. So if someone comes and says, I've been doing this, or I'm going to be doing this, I don't really see how it fits. What, well, maybe agritourism, but we, we wrote it out, because they only have seven acres or whatever, or but yet we see, hey, this is, this, this is gonna work, we just don't know what it is. With development agreement or a county-led initiative to create a smaller version of agritourism that makes sense. I think that's the way we should play this, and that's, that's what I take. And I know we didn't go over all the changes with each other, but maybe we might do.
I guess the tension is, is the default, things are allowed unless prohibited? Or is the default things are prohibited unless allowed?
They're prohibited unless allowed.
The way the code is written right now, they're prohibited unless they're allowed.
You have to follow the code instead.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, you'd say, if you're a piano teacher and you got one student, then the time you're exempt from licensing. Because.
Yeah, yeah.
Just an observation or two. Okay, um, first of all, I looked at the table, it's in here, it's on pages twenty-seven through thirty, and not to get into it right now, but the way it exists currently in the code is some of these things maybe have overlapping definitions already, like you've got your agroecology reach, research and education center, which the way it's defined is pretty broad. But then you've also got down here a line for educational classes. Is that what Commissioner Burton is suggesting?
Is that what Commissioner Burton is suggesting um might already be happening and how does that fit in here? You might be talking about splitting some of these things off into some. Separate category and if you do, you might want to. It sounds like. Taken completely out of the agritourism operation and make them something totally different or define them. In a way that if they're on a large. Large enough farm, then they are agritourism, but you can also do it. On a smaller parcel, these educational classes and have that be called something else. So maybe, maybe. This table here. Could be reviewed for that and some things stay, some things go, some things become something else if they're on a smaller carousel or a smaller operation. If I'm hearing you right, but that would take, you know, reviewing this line by line.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe suggesting that in the next work session or or whatever.
That's, yeah, that's, I think that's what we're getting at. If we go over this line by line, are we capturing everything though?
And then you pointed out, if new things come up that aren't in here. Then I think what you said is bring it to the county, the county can. You can either apply or ask the county to make an. Amendment, a text amendment to add something at that point. And then, you know, I I don't know. Anyway, I just thought the table might.
Yeah.
Need to be looked at in pretty close detail to to get at what you're hoping for here. Um, the other thing. Maybe to answer your question, sure.
But that also. Because it also goes down to smaller definition. That that's the other problem with this is we're saying. And their educational classes are okay. And and so so now, like, so so I get your point and I I agree, however, here's the challenge that I see. All right, educational classes are okay. Well, they're okay in in what form and what class? Okay, well, they're okay in a ten acre, they're okay. That they study subject matter incorporated into agriculture and agriculture component to an agricultural product produced on site. Okay, well, how big can I do? You know, as big as a university? Can I do small? You know, where do I classify that? And then it's like, okay, so on a one acre, you know, where does that fit in? And where do we draw the line at? Like, when do I stop trying to define what's out there and just say, hey, look? Reality is what we're trying to do here is say, hey. Farms, we're okay if you want to have a wedding or barn dances or educational classes because that kind of fits. And but then we're saying, but reality is you're going to need to be big. Those are the ones we're okay with. The small ones, we're not okay with barn dances and stuff in the. In the. Up by Wolf Creek. Just doesn't really make a lot of sense. So. And that's the hard part I have is we're trying to define it so small to open up the door and then it becomes like, well, educational classes. I teach a little bit about plants or a little, I teach about tractors. Should that be okay? Tractors were only made for farms and so is an agricultural tool. You know, you connect all those dots, it just becomes so difficult to get down and narrow it all out. That all of these, we definitely need to review and make sure that those are here, but I think it needs to say. But all I'm okay with is like on a bigger scale because farms on a bigger scale is what we're really talking about.
Yeah, so I see, I think. Maybe I'm just repeating what you said, but I see three buckets of stuff hanging out there. The easiest is what you just said, a big operation. Um, probably bigger than ten acres in reality, that's. You know, not in a neighborhood that really farms and they really want to do something ancillary. You know, on their act, in their agricultural operation, but that's the one we're going to see the least of. The pumpkin thing, we're. And maybe whatever else is up by quality, we're not going to see a lot because the folks who run those. Do that, they're just not going to do that on a big scale, but that's what. That's the one bucket. That's the bucket that I think is this. Then in the middle, you've got a bucket of. I'll just call them um schemers or operators, whatever.
Doesn't it also?
Who maybe grow something, maybe they don't. They're on, you know, three, four, five acres. Um, and they want to operate something that makes real money or gives them some unique situation and that that nobody else. Hardly anyone else gets. Those are the ones that are probably. You know, fit in the no category because they're going to be a nuisance and they're just trying to get a privilege. Then you have the third bucket. Which I also see is reasonably easy to. Grasp, but maybe hard for the county to deal with, and that's all this other little stuff, classes. You know, just all that little stuff that maybe has an ag orientation, but isn't tourism at all. Uh, maybe it's good. Um, for the county to figure out a way that that those folks can. Can do that legitimately without having to jump through. A dozen hoops and spend a bunch of money. As long as it's. Small scale without. Without negative impact. But of the three buckets. You know, this one. This deals with the real agritourism, which is probably the least likely to actually happen. In my opinion. And that's, you know, the bigger property. If it does happen, great. But it's probably not going to happen a whole lot. The most important, I think, from this, from my. Management point is to make sure that people aren't getting an advantage that the somebody else would want. But these guys just figured out a way to scheme it in the side door. Um, under the banner of something that isn't really.
It was never intended.
Never intended, yeah. And I'm not saying there, you know, scheme is a. Majority, but it, you know, they're just trying to get something going. And maybe, and that doesn't fit. But the smaller bucket or the smaller, maybe the most. Numeric. Number of. Uh, potential operations is this other bucket, and maybe the county needs to give some thought to, but keep it out of this, I think. I think keep it out of this. Keep this clean. Keep this. Agritourism per the most typical definition, bigger operations, let them do events and and whatnot. But they've got to have the space.
So if I understand this correctly. You're thinking that if we had ten acres, that's where we may be looking glamping, wedding.
Whatever that bigger cutoff is, yes.
What are the?
And I'm I'm almost. Pardon me?
More impactful uses on those larger pieces.
Yes.
And then maybe the three to ten acres is more for education type operations.
I don't even know if that needs a.
Or.
If you take, if you take out the. You know, the big impact, the glamping, the, you know, events, you take all that off the table. I don't know that it. You know, size and so it matters so much as long as your parking and infrastructure matches what you're going to do. Um, but it's that bucket in the middle. Or maybe somebody does have five or six acres. And maybe they do have a few beehives or a chicken coop. And they want to invite, you know, and have a farm to table dinner once a month for a hundred people. Charge a hundred bucks. Um, bring in, you know, a chef or whatever. But it really isn't agritourism. They're just running an ad hoc restaurant at that point. Even though maybe they, the eggs come from, some of the eggs come from their place, but. That's, and then they want to have people spend the night too sometimes. That's the part that is probably going to impact neighbors because it's going to be in a smaller. Area, probably not out in the middle of. Pure egg zone. And that's the part that I don't think fits.
I think here is the other challenge is there, this, we want there to be qualifications. Right? There's a lot in this and in the previous that had qualifications that be at holes. And I think starting out, I think reality, I think where this came from, right? Why is there one in the beginning that was? Someone wanted to do a wedding or something, I don't know, on a farm. And or even sell pumpkin patches, right? That like that one they want to do, well, this makes sense for that. If we try and, so so let's say we put it in this, we either have to weaken the qualifications. Or. Or or we're going to get bad players that work their way around. Right? Well, I'm 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 bad actors, as we say, that is one. I'm I'm this and I'm this and I have ten acres. It's not contiguous or it is, you know, it they'll find a hole and so. I I think that like educational classes, you mentioned, should it be something separate? Uh, I think it should be here because absolutely, like if we're trying, I think probably not only are we trying to give ideas to big farms with this. We're trying to encourage to say, yeah, like make sure it's included as approved, right? And uh, um, I think that if we. We want teeth in this one because it's got, you've got the ability to do a lot. And maybe in the other one, you don't need as much tea, but you don't have, I say, we're not trying. I'm not trying to give people, you know, like I'm saying. My point, I'm not trying to say that I give people rights. That's right, but in the other one, we would want it to be less qualified, right? You know, maybe we don't, you don't need to be able to do educational classes. You don't have to have. Uh, a fully functioning, operating something. You can just be an expert, right? That. That's a totally separate thing.
Right.
And so again, that that I think those are, those are just kind of a separate area where we're trying to address. Overnight stays and bigger parties. And those I think are like, well, we can have those in a bigger setting. Smaller setting or a small farm. I want to know how to, we want to be able to do it. But this needs to have some teeth so that we don't get bad actors with this.
Right.
And that needs to be more open so we can encourage that. And I think that's what.
Eric, I think I heard you say the county. Issues uh. Event permits.
Mm-hmm.
Specialisms. Special event and you can, so somebody who wanted to have a. Farm to table dinner for fifty people once a month in the summer. They could get permits to do that.
They could.
And they would just have to meet certain requirements.
I think when it goes over. Six hundred, there's there's a six or seven hundred number. Then the health department requires certain additional additional things as far as. Porta potties.
Yeah, that's a big number.
Things like that.
I mean, if somebody's going to. You know, in a small property, run events or have a wedding here or there or whatever, they're going to do it.
Under.
You know, exactly six hundred people probably.
Yeah, and when you're doing a wedding in your backyard and things like that, we do not require permits for those stuff.
But what if you're charred, you know, what if it really is a business and you just do five a year?
That's when you'd have to do a special event.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so clearly to me, again, three, I see three buckets. And each bucket has its own set of. Issues. Two of the three seemed pretty straightforward in that, you know, one's pretty well documented. The one that's a little more. Ad hoc. Probably the county could figure out how to. Deal with that and maybe even make it easier than it is. The one in the middle. You know, if it's, if it's. Special permits, special event permits, if those are offered up to the people in a way that. Makes sense and they can clear the hurdles, then great, they can do it. If they can't clear the hurdles. They can.
And there's already. Provisions in place that address some of those things, but if we want to have an ag related. Then we can. Bring the use table back to you, which I think is a good idea.
So. Looking at line six eighty, no, I'm looking at page twenty eight, bottom of twenty eight. The education classes. So the. Two red lines on the left have been eliminated and I think they refer back to line six eighty, market garden. Operation and family farming operation. It's been eliminated because they were in smaller operations.
Yeah, the garden family was for more small and so we just changed it to small, medium, large and ranch.
Yeah, but if we, then you go to the table on page twenty eight. You you can't do an educational class unless. You are in this. What? Six to. Six for twenty acres.
Right, what 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 the revision of this does is it eliminates from the table entirely. The garden and family designations and so it would take those out of. The agricultural agritourism chapter and then. What, what the discussion has been is. As I understand it, maybe there is some other bucket out there that we could put it in for smaller operations, but it wouldn't be considered agritourism. As part of this chapter.
Okay, now I guess there are two approaches. One is. Put them somewhere else just so we can. Put them somewhere.
Right.
So they're allowed.
Right.
Or go back and put them in here. And then you just uh. Okay, educational class in one to three acres. Is allowed if it's not for greater than. Eight people.
Right. That's a choice. If you want to leave it in the agritourism code. Then you could add something like that in where you have these sections that apply to smaller things, or you could just take it out completely. And put it somewhere else. And we have agritourism for the larger things, which I think is what Commissioner Barber is suggesting is this might be best.
In my head, it just seems cleaner.
It's the large.
It just seems cleaner. Keep it what the definition says and what the title says. Even though you know you're not going to have a lot of it, when you do, it's going to be big and significant. And deal with the other things separately.
So so I and to 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 follow up with that, the. The small and educational class. Should, the question should, we should ask ourselves is, should there be the same level of teeth to be able to do that versus this? I think when I say teeth or obstacles or requirements that you have to go through, have in order to qualify for the act tourism. Those should be greater because, you know, setbacks are certain and different things, right? You should have a lot more there. Where if it's educational classes and you're smaller, we should more try and, okay, well, how do we? How do we allow this to happen? Because we know there's not a lot of money there.
Yeah.
We know that it's not a lot of impact, so how do we encourage it or allow it in a smaller zone? But this, we need more. So it's like you have to write two separate underlying, okay? You need to have a farm operation for two years. Unless it's an agriculture or educational class, well, then we start getting. Like the unlesses become the workaround.
You can pull it into some separate bucket, then you can keep it as straightforward. As works for the county.
You can do that.
And and just make it. Fit the circumstances.
If I were wrapping this. One way, I would. Copy this thing. And I'd call this A and I'd kind of paste it into B. And I'd go through there and make all the small stuff, they're small in the B. And I'd leave the A as it is for the big stuff. That's one way to do it. And if staff goes through this thing as the guest, you look at the table and say. Okay, there's some leaves, any don't get it, they're small. Yeah, then let's put them into B for sure, in the same ordinance or as separate. Place somewhere.
But would you leave out the. Things that ring the bell for. Potential nuisance such as overnight and events.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed in A. Or in the B.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I, and these are the A, big impact.
And that way you can say there's less requirements to be able to go here and there's more here because there's more.
Yeah.
Potential concern.
That'll be easy for us to come back and.
And it can be, okay, you want to fit in this?
We.
You want to fit in this?
Difficult for big impact. The big negative impact. And we've. Encourage things that don't have any impact that can be helpful to people.
Do it all the time, not a problem. Do you want this back on your agenda on the twenty second? Or.
Will you, will you talk about the twenty?
Yes.
All the.
The twenty sixth.
Is it the?
So.
Yeah.
The.
Which month is that? Twenty sixth.
Okay, so August twenty second will just be a regular meeting and it will be here in the chambers. The twenty sixth of September will be a meeting up in the Ogden Valley. We've reserved the library. The first part of the meeting will be just regular items, so our meeting will start at four thirty. Our pre-meeting and then at five to six, we'll have our um regular items on there. And then from six to eight. We will be talking about. The general plan and infrastructure.
So say that, when, what is that?
September twenty sixth.
September.
August twenty second is our regular meeting and September twenty sixth will be our regular meeting as well.
But that'll be in in the valley.
It'll be at the library in Huntsville. We've reserved both sites of the library, um, where they have the auditory and then the other kind of open room. And we'll get more details on the format of that meeting, the closer we get to it, but. We just want you to reserve that time and. Um, and then we'll get the word out there. We could have had the meeting. Up in the valley at the library on the twenty second, but I chose not to do that, so we gave the public more time. Um, to be aware of the meeting on September twenty sixth.
So when you just gave this kind of.
So, when you just gave this kind of. Brief outline, and like you said, you'll firm things up and as we get closer, but, um. So the four thirty pre-meeting, the five to six, one hour of a regular meeting, so just whatever topics. You guys would normally be putting on our agenda. And then from six to eight, the general plan and infrastructure, is that still a meeting? Or do we close the meeting and then it's like a discussion with the public? Or how is, how does that work?
We'll get you more detail.
Okay.
We don't know at this specific time how that format's gonna work. Um, but we'll get you more detail.
So it'd be like, I mean, like we'd be voting on things?
It'll, it'll be more educational.
Okay.
Yeah. So when you say general plan. I see, you said general plan.
If you.
Any structure.
Give you enough specifics, it would be general plan to the village areas.
So he said general plan and infrastructure. I'm gonna guess we're gonna talk about the street regularly. That is my guess.
So, well, that'd be. There'll be discussion. And we'll get you more detail later. But we just want you to reserve that date, um, for the Ogden Valley, cuz we've reserved that for the library. And then most likely what we'll do is we'll take the information you've given us here and we'll have a work session on August twenty second.
Is there anything that we need to work on?
Not on this. I think we'll come back. We'll try to get some stuff out to you within the next. Week, so you have some time to look at this and digest it. And then we'll go from there.
If, um, so I think at this point, the other, I know Torman and Montgomery were all. This, when I spoke to them. Individually, they, this was the direction they were seeing as well.
About the larger acreage.
Yeah. So if, if. You're feeling that way generally, then I think that's the direction.
If we split A and B.
Yeah.
We don't play a little things. Creating a problem.
Yeah.
But we regulate the big things that are really susceptible and have a large negative impact. That's probably.
Okay. We will work on that. We will get something back to you. Um, hopefully within a week for you to, to look at. So. Kind of a side note. Box Silver, there's another code chapter in the tax code that is Urban Farming Assessment Act. It is very similar to the Farmland Assessment Act, but it's for one to five acre parcels. And maybe Box Silver County has adopted that, and maybe that's what your. Acquaintance or whoever it is, maybe they qualify under that. It. Runs basically the same way, but it's allowed. In smaller. So it could be.
Yeah, they, from what I recall, has it been? Several ten years or so, well, not that long. But either way.
Yeah.
If, that it was allowed there, but Weaver County was one of the few. That it was only, you had to.
Yeah, Weber County adopted the Urban Farming Assessment Ordinance in. January of twenty twenty. So now. It is allowed. As long as it meets the provisions of the state code, but the Urban. Farming Assessment Act is available now since January of twenty twenty and we were.
So you can, with your operating farm, that's what I, that's what I recall.
Yeah, one to five acres.
And we, we were adopted that now.
Yes. Few years ago.
When I was doing it, I remember Weaver County, it would, it didn't qualify. Is. If I remember what it was, I think it was my dad lived here and he had, we were doing some farming, or we had cows that we kept at his house. And we were saying, man, it'd be nice, we could. Do it on the two acres or whatever. But it didn't beat the qualification. Box Silver could do that, it's.
That's it, not, not me.
That might be a good thing to mention in this public meeting up there. Make people aware of that, but. Make people aware of the availability of the urban. Farmer, or urban, urban farming assessment.
Farming Assessment Act. We'll probably be talking about that when we have the public hearing.
For the.
For this. Okay, cuz up in the Ogden Valley, the meeting on September twenty sixth will be given more with the village nodes. And the general plan and.
Somehow get the information. I haven't heard any.
We will. We'll get that out. We can even get that out in our work session on the twenty second, and then also we have a public hearing on this. Which most likely the public hearing on this would be, I would think sometime in October.
And, and that. Impacts the ordinance we're talking about because you suggested restricting it to green belt. But do, sorry, well, this. Agritourism, there's a section in here that's written that says you gotta, to qualify, you have to be. In green belt. And under the Farmland Assessment Act.
Right, well, but if we make it a cut off bigger. Then that. And everything bigger is applicable for the green belt.
Yeah, so you can take out green belt.
We talked about that with last time cuz we, there's concerns about, I remember you, that, that was one thing we were gonna have. I think Charlie's gonna check on this.
Yeah.
Our, you know. Whose responsibility is it to check and make sure?
And then.
What level and is the tax assessors gonna do that?
Yeah, I'm not sure where he was on that, so we can talk about him on the twenty second. Yeah, or you can say green belt and at least ten acres, because I could have a fifteen acre parcel, but I'm not doing agriculture. On it, so I don't qualify for green belt. Could I still come in under this?
Well, you could do agriculture and not have a bike for.
That's possible. Yeah, there are various scenarios there, so you would need to decide.
Which is we still have to establish it. Anyway, yeah, uh, and I just mentioned three things.
Yeah.
Yeah. And these are just mentioning, uh.
Uh, one stuff that's on the agenda.
This under other comments, okay? But. I wish. Some pressure could be on the state. To put a runaway truck grab from the bottom of trappers. Because somebody, I mean, drivers have been killed. But we're gonna have somebody keep on by a dump truck. And a family like that. There ought to be an option for one of these drivers. To. Do something other than. Going to the like, okay. Uh. Somebody mentioned to me that someone from the county was saying. You can't have livestock within seventy feet. I think she said seventy feet or a hundred feet of the road. A road, of a road.
I think you're talking about the feedlot and feedlot requirements.
Yeah, that may be, but it was.
Beyond.
It was.
Capos. Pardon? That might be on capos large.
Uh, this, this is just any county, you can't have an animal within. Seventy feet of the road. And I thought, I always think that.
We saw, that was actually in there when we talked about feedlots. That was true.
Yeah, I think on a feedlot.
But we fixed it.
The feedlot, yeah.
No, there was.
As any. Farm animal.
There was problems in that you had to have a, there was like on a county road, you had to have so many feet. And your fence has to be so many feet back. There were lots of problems, but we had.
There was.
I swear we addressed those.
I, I can check into that.
Okay. Uh, that was just a neighbor reporting me. She was told that.
Okay, terminal, there's noise ordinance, we don't have a noise ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we don't have a noise order?
Of the county. We just never got into those specifics. Most municipalities have those.
I wanna be able to make noise all I want.
We do have a noise.
One of these car clubs come by and a motorcycle club, a hundred motorcycle, they don't have no orders.
Well, we, I, I know I've been in meetings with the sheriff about that. I don't even know if it's about a noise order on state, I mean. There's been all kinds of, the sheriff's like, there's no.
And then the guys came by my house and go down and randomly drive right by my stills.
It echoes right up the, I mean, it, it, everybody can hear it, I think, you know. I imagine.
So, I don't know if that's done, we just. Shoot him or what?
That was suggested in the meeting. I did, I did have a question, maybe I talked about it before I came, but, um. The September conference, right? So the September twenty sixth in the valley is our meeting. And that's on Tuesday, and then the Thursday and Friday of that same week is the Utah.
APA conference.
Congress here in Ogden.
Yep.
So. You're gonna handle all that and we just need to kind of block those days of our.
Yeah, block those days out, but we'll be sending out emails and information out to you on the agenda and everything. Um, we're almost ready to finalize and just have it fully published. But we're still trying to get headshots and bios of some of the speakers and things like that, so.
And I think you said it's, it's free, but I looked at the schedule that is currently posted. There are some classes that I'd be more interested in attending than others, but. It's not, we don't have to sign up. You can just kind of go in whenever, wherever you wanna go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm getting my headshot right here.
Oh, wait, okay. You're ready. Are you gonna be speaking in one of the sessions?
Uh, no. Uh, anything else? Everybody good? Then we'll adjourn now. Rick, you got a long drive.
It's all good. Just up to Hoover, the girls can.